I'd like to welcome everybody to the Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session for September 11, 2017. First item on our agenda is Community Needs Assessment Findings presented by David Fujimoto.
Great, thank you. Welcome, City Council members. I'm David Fujimoto, Director of Sustainability with City of Issaquah. And I'll also be joined here tonight by Martha Sassorosi, who's our Human Services and Social Sustainability Coordinator. And then also, we had a consultant who's not able to join us, but I wanted to mention her. Her name is Allison Auerbach. She works for Health Resources in Action. She's here with us in spirit. And I also wanted to mention a few other folks. We've got several of our commissioners from our Human Services Commission who have joined us here tonight, so I wanted to thank them. And then also recognize that we had an advisory board who worked with us on this needs assessment as well, and we have several folks who've joined us here tonight. So, thank you very much for joining us. So, we're here tonight to talk about, to present the results of the community needs assessment. And tonight, we're going to talk, spend a little bit of time and go rewinding a little bit and going through some background and timeline. We're going to talk a little bit about our approach and our methodology. Then, we're going to focus on some of the notable findings, and the majority of kind of the attention is really on the key themes. And then, we'll talk a little bit about the next steps that are proposed. So, as a point of background, there's a quote here from the Issaquah Human Services element within the comprehensive plan. And I'll just quickly read it. It says, "Issaquah strives to be a sustainable and healthy community, one where every person is important and where meeting basic human needs is a shared responsibility between individuals and the community." So, back in 2015, City Council had established a healthy community strategy goal. This work that we're going to present here tonight is a part of that overall work and that initiative. And you might recall that we had produced a white paper about, just over a couple of years ago, actually, about a year and a half ago, that talked about various approaches and ways in which the city could pursue this, recognizing that it was a new area of work for the city, and it could encompass many different things. That white paper suggested moving forward with initial piece of work for a needs assessment to provide a foundation for future work, and that's what we're presenting here tonight. A little bit on timeline for the needs assessment itself. We've been working with the consultant that we had brought onboard in about November of last year, following RFP Request for Proposals process. We had also convened an advisory board to help guide us through our efforts, met with them over the course of the last year, about five different times, and then brought us to this point here tonight where we've completed a final report. We do plan to, I'll talk about next steps, but we do plan to share that out as a useful resource for other organizations as well, and then move forward from that point into strategy development. Real briefly, I mentioned our consultant, Allison, works with Health Resources in Action. They're a nationally recognized nonprofit organization, actually, that has their base in Boston, but they have satellite staff in various locations, including Allison, based out of Seattle. They have a number of core competencies in assessment and research and evaluation, strategic planning and organizational effectiveness, health communications, policy development, program planning, and social determinants of health. The community needs assessment, so it's abbreviated CNA for short, apologize for the acronyms. But as I described, really what our goal with this whole project was, is to identify priority health and human services disparities within the Issaquah community. We wanted to inform our policies. We wanted to take the opportunity, because we were working with a number of sub-populations within the community, to take that opportunity to kind of build relationships and establish a connection. Currently, the city makes substantial investments in things like human services grants, which you're all aware of, and which our Human Services Commission plays a significant role in. We have in-kind support of local nonprofit organizations, as well as staff time and investment in programs and services. But we haven't done a needs assessment in the past. We've always relied on regional efforts, or most notably, we see Bellevue's Human Services Needs Assessment referred to in our grants process, but nothing specifically locally, at least that's been done in a kind of a comprehensive way. There have been some bodies of work done by particular organizations, such as the hospitals have started to do some of this work under the Affordable Care Act. There was some body of work around this in the work on the Human Services campus, but that work even was over, I think, seven or eight years ago. So, this is really a different approach for the city in kind of taking a more of a data-informed look at what we can learn about our community, so that we can design some strategies going forward. A little bit about health equity and disparities. Really, as I mentioned before, a big focus on this work was understanding the disparities in the community which affect health. Ultimately, the goal is health equity, with the idea that the achievement of the highest levels of health for all will benefit the community. So, on the slide, there's a couple of long-ish descriptions of health equity and health disparities. But as I said, really, the point is by decreasing disparities, we're increasing health equity. And so, again, when you decrease the conditions which systematically and disproportionately affect groups of people, you move to increase the health of everyone. The graphic up there also describes health, or describes issues about equity as well as more broadly, but they can definitely be applied to health specifically. The needs assessment approach is really key. As we noted in the white paper, it was recommended that we follow a social determinants of health approach, which means that we're looking at many of the upstream factors which affect health. Oftentimes, and I apologize, the slide didn't quite make it through, but the pie chart shows four different segments or quadrants there. The green is health behaviors. The kind of grayish color is healthcare. Orange is physical environment, and the tan color is socio-economic factors. And so, really, what that chart is showing is that oftentimes, there's a lot of focus and attention on health behaviors, the green pie up there, or healthcare access, the gray part of the pie. But really, the significant, about half of the equation is the upstream factors that really need to be considered as well. And so, those are the socio-economic factors, the physical environment factors, both built and natural environments, that are really important to an overall assessment like this. And those are also areas in which the city as a jurisdiction has some ability to impact on a local level. The needs assessment also took what's called a strength-based or asset-based approach, which means that we're focusing on the qualities that we have here locally and trying to build upon those. And it also viewed health broadly. So, it's everything from individual factors to community-wide factors as a whole. Again, the social determinants of health. Again, they're recognizing that we're looking at both the upstream as well as the downstream components of this work. And the World Health Organization describes social determinants as the conditions in which people are born, grow, live, work, and age. And these are the circumstances that are shaped by the distribution of money, power, and resources. So, the social determinants include economic stability, access to services and resources, the physical environment, social environment, and educational environment. And then, you can see in terms of the kind of health behaviors and outcomes, the downstream portion, there are a variety of specific factors there as well. As I mentioned before, we had convened an advisory group, several members of which are joining us here tonight. And their role was really to help the city and our consultant to shape and guide our work. So, they were involved in a number of stages of the work, helping to identify indicators and inform us about data choices, identify how we would go about utilizing some of that data, some of the key stakeholders we wanted to include in focus groups, how we would go about collecting some of that information. They also brought their own data resources to the table and helped us kind of provide opportunities for correlating and connecting with that information. And they also advised on the report itself. And so, they reviewed a couple of drafts, actually, of the report as we worked through various iterations of it throughout the process. So, we had 11 different members with a cross-section of individuals who have knowledge in various fields and knowledge of our community. In terms of data collection methods and information, we used an approach that had both qualitative and quantitative data incorporated into this process. Due to some limitations on budget, we were focused mostly from a quantitative side on secondary data, or data that's produced by others that we can analyze. And that came from a variety of different sources, whether it's census, American community survey data, or other sources. And then, we also employed a qualitative component, so incorporating focus groups. And really, that was to get to kind of the lived experiences that lives behind the data. So, while that was not statistically significant, it helped us to understand more about kind of the nuance and kind of what some of the kind of realities of numbers might mean to a community member. So, it's kind of adding some richness and depth to the data that we had collected. So, there are five different focus groups, and then also 12 key informant interviews. Those were also qualitative, and they involved agencies and staff with, who are providing services to community members here in Issaquah. Also included, Eastside Fire and Rescue, a couple of our faith-based organizations, organizations involved in employment services, School District. We had a developer who is familiar with Issaquah provide some feedback as well, as well as local hospital and health providers. And then, as with any project of this nature, there are a number of limitations, and we definitely recognize that. In the report itself, we talked quite a bit about limitations, so we're careful about drawing conclusions solely based on the data that we were able to collect and analyze. And they come in a variety of flavors and forms, you know, whether it's from the secondary data that we are collecting and our ability to analyze and look at that at the localized level, to some cases, lacking area-specific data and the environmental data quality, and just, you know, other issues about response bias and recall bias that is inherent in some of the data that we have as well. And then, finally, with this effort, we're, most of the work that we had done, had done in the focus groups was conducted in English, so we may have missed opportunities for getting feedback from other populations in our community. And then, I guess with that, I'll transition to Martha.
Thank you, David, for taking us through some of the background and kind of dryer components. So, I'm excited for us to get to some of the findings and the key themes from this assessment. And so, first, I will start with a few notable findings. We'll get to the four key themes momentarily. And so, I just wanted to note, too, that some of these key findings that I'm just going to share with you briefly now are accessible in the report on pages eight through 10, along with additional data and appendices A and B, especially, yeah, for the folks who really enjoy diving into the numbers. So, briefly, 25% of Issaquah's population is under 18 years of age. Approximately, one in five people aged five or older speak a language other than English in their home. And taking a look at some of the data from our social determinants of health, so those categories, economic stability through access, we see that median household income is high. However, there are stark disparities by race and ethnicity, and also by sex. The proportion of individuals living below the poverty line doubled from 2010 to 2015. More than half of residents 25 years and older have a bachelor's degree or higher. Nearly nine out of 10 residents rate the quality of the overall natural environment in Issaquah as good or excellent. The violent crime rate in 2015 was considerably lower than that of Washington overall. And in 2015, Issaquah had a lower percentage of residents who were uninsured compared to the county overall. When we look at health behaviors and outcomes, we found that life expectancy at birth is two years greater in Issaquah than for King County. So, folks here are living longer. Leading causes of mortality are consistent with King County, though we did find in 2014 data that 7% of adults in Issaquah had ever had coronary heart disease or a heart attack, and that's more than double that of King County. And on behavioral health, we found that high school seniors in the school district engage in current alcohol use and binge drinking more than their peers countywide. And so, that's just a sampling of some highlighted findings from our assessment, but I want to get us to the key themes. So, again, there were four key themes that this assessment found. So, first, we'll take a look at disparities by race and ethnicity, by sex and by income. Second, a lack of stable housing. Third, barriers to accessing services and resources. And fourth, behavioral health norms and resources. So, first up, disparities by race and ethnicity, sex, and income. Inequality in education, income, and other determinants of health exacerbate the gaps in health outcomes that we find. The greater the gap, for example, between the richest and the poorest within a community, the greater the differences in health. And data across determinants revealed a number of disparities by these three demographic groups, including economic stability, as you see here. This figure shows the variation in poverty rates by race and ethnicity in Issaquah and compares those rates to King County. So, while their percentage of individuals living below the poverty line in Issaquah as a whole in 2015 was relatively low when you compare it to the county, so it's about 6% versus 11% overall. Census data show that over half of Black or African-American residents in Issaquah were living below the poverty line. Yes? Or councilmember remarks?
Do we have any thoughts as to why that is? That's really stark.
It's very stark, and one of the most frustrating aspects of this project is that we found that it, I think, raised more questions than answers. And certainly, I think, now having identified these four themes, we have some very focused areas of further inquiry to better understand how we arrived at, you know, this number.
Yeah, I really think we need to, down the road, figure out why that is. I mean, why it's so different, for instance, than the Hispanic community.
Yes, and of note, within income and poverty data for the Hispanic or Latino community in Issaquah, is that there seems that there may be an even greater wealth gap within that sub-population, as median income for Hispanics or Latinos was greater than median income for the community as a whole, but they also had a higher poverty rate. So, again, raising some really important questions, which this assessment at this stage wasn't able to answer, but helps to direct us more in our future work. And focus group participants and interviewees shared the perception that many that work in Issaquah cannot afford to live here. Many participants also saw a need for employment assistance services in Issaquah. They felt that those services could help bridge the gap to self-sufficiency. And here, we have some data on education. So, this is showing the gap in the four-year cohort high school graduation rate by income status. So, as you can see, there's a gap between students who are categorized as non-low income and those who are low income. And those would be students who qualify for free or reduced lunch, though that gap has declined over the last two years. Differences by income status also emerged when we looked at post-secondary enrollment. So, low-income students had an enrollment rate of 68% in 2014 compared to a rate of 85% for non-low-income students. We also saw disparities by race when we look at the high school graduation rate, and again, looking at data for educational attainment. So, here, in Figure Five, we stratified 2017 National Citizen Survey data on perceptions of safety by race and ethnicity. And we found some variation with Asian and Hispanic or Latino and other non-white respondents perceiving a lower sense of safety when compared to white or Black or African-American residents. And so, this represents, we also have it, so we have 2017 and 2015 data broken out here. And so, I think this most stark difference here is looking at the difference between 2015 and 2017 data for responded to identified as Hispanic or Latino. So, in 2015, 100% felt very safe. That rate dropped to 69% in 2017.
So...
Yes?
So, I note that the community that feels least safe is other. What is other in this context?
And so, this is if a respondent selected other for race and ethnicity.
So, is it a statistically significant portion of the respondents chose other?
So, the National Citizen Survey takes a representative sample of the community. Yes.
I just wonder if the other category, if N is a small enough number that we don't have to be concerned, or if N, I mean, it's...
I believe that N was fairly small. Yeah. And so, yeah, when we stratify, we are getting to, yeah, very small numbers.
All right.
And we'll take a closer look at perceptions of affordable housing in Theme Two. Okay. So, when we think about what this may mean for our work...
Can I ask a follow-on?
Yeah.
It looks, it would be interesting to see if, it says that other includes American, Indian, Alaskan native, Native Hawaiian, and other Pacific Islander other race, or two or more races. It would be interesting to see if there is a significant number of any of those particular communities, if it's really people who just want to identify, who self-identify as other. But if that were actually a community like, you know, Native American or whatever, it'd be very interesting to know if that, if there are actual communities that feel least safe in our town.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, implications as we think about what this may mean for future work. Disparities in determinants like economic stability have demonstrated impacts on health. Higher income and social status are linked to better health, and employment is directly correlated with an individual's health. When the rate of unemployment increases, illness and premature death increase as well. Economic and education factors also impact the likelihood to delay or not receive needed medical care and prescriptions compared with employed adults. And these factors are also linked with poor health, more stress, and lower self-confidence. So, the city has significant roles in shaping the physical environment in Issaquah and influencing social determinants, included within economic stability, access to resources and services through its many roles around land use, managing public resources, investments, coordination with other jurisdictions, so both at the systemic level and also at a more programmatic and direct service level. And so, those roles provide opportunities for work to address upstream structures, policies, and institutions that impact health outcomes at the community scale, as well as that program-level work through investments, technical assistance, and other supports to organizations and programs and services that more directly impact education and economic disparities faced by the community. Yes?
I have a question. Could you say a little bit more about land use codes? If the topic is disparities by race and ethnicity, sex, and income, what about land use codes? We're talking, it's very interesting. The second half of this meeting, we're going to be talking about generally that, you know, in a more specific topic, but how does this kind of planning or land use codes or zoning, how does this, can you give us a little bit more about how this plays into this topic of disparities?
Sure. So, land use plays a critical role in our physical and built environment, and then the people and programs that inhabit those physical spaces. So, when we think about the walkability of our communities, access to parks, recreational activities, think about what types of housing are built where, and whether there's a mix of income and other demographic factors within a neighborhood. Those are all things that are absolutely affected by the land use codes that influence, you know, what's building our community.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to talk about that more, a bit, too, in discussion as we get through all these themes. So, our second theme, lack of stable housing. And so, housing's a topic that has certainly, you know, been in front of this council consistently in recent years, and certainly this year with the development of a housing strategy. So, we just want to take a moment to go through some of the findings from this assessment, which certainly borrows from work that was done for the housing strategy, including this figure here, which takes a look at the average price of two-bedroom apartments in Issaquah and compares that to median family income. So, this is showing that, you know, in 2013, and I apologize, the gray scale doesn't come out very well in projection, but in 2013, families who were earning 80% of median income in Issaquah could afford average rent for a two-bedroom apartment. In 2016, they no longer could. And so, that's the takeaway from that figure. The connections between health and housing are well-established. Access to healthy, affordable housing can have an impact on health outcomes of occupants by reducing exposure to environmental toxins and other hazards, providing safe environments for families to live in and form social bonds, as well as freeing up financial resources to pay for healthcare services, purchase more nutritious food, and meet other basic needs. The growing gap between housing costs and income can also be seen in housing cost data and community perceptions of affordability. So, in 2015, 30% of households in Issaquah were housing cost burdened, so they were spending more than 30% of their income on housing. And one in five renter households was severely cost-burdened, so they were spending more than 50% of their income on housing. So, the proportion of respondents to the National Citizen Survey who felt that the availability of quality, affordable housing was poor doubled from 25% in 2015 to 51% in 2017. And this is also the data that we alluded to in Theme One. Here, we've broken it out by income, and so, we see that eight out of 10 respondents who had a household income under $100,000 viewed availability of quality, affordable housing to be fair or poor. We want to share some quotes from our focus groups and interviews. Several shared the perception, or this, and the sentiment that the increase in cost of living was causing people to have to leave Issaquah. The importance of housing to health and human services was also one of three cross-cutting themes in recent community outreach and engagement activity conducted as a part of the Veterans and Human Services Levy Assessment and Levy Renewal Process. So, it's fairly recent work that was done countywide. So, the Department of Community and Human Services reported in January of this year that affordable housing was an area of discussion at every community engagement, focus group, and rural meeting. It was the most frequently cited gap in their online survey as well. And also, housing and homelessness were also highlighted issues for immigrant and refugee communities in King County in the Immigrant and Refugee Task Force Report. And that report specifically called out discrimination, issues with substandard housing, insufficient shelters, need for pathways to homeownership, and utility assistance as issues beyond just a lack of affordable housing options. So, when we think about areas of kind of continuing and future work within housing, first and foremost is the housing strategy currently in the process of being adopted and with planned implementation this year into 2018 and 2019. When we think about housing, you know, it's one of the things that's most core to people's daily lives. So, home typically represents a place of safety, security, and where a household comes together. It's also often a household's single largest monthly expenditure. So, when we think about the housing strategy, affordability is a key part of it. We're working to shape several recommendations related to affordable multifamily housing retention, funding, new development, housing type diversity, and also points, the strategy also points to housing options and services for community members who are housing insecure or who have barriers to independent living. or who have barriers to independent living. The strategy also calls for continued work with neighboring jurisdictions in King County to address this regional issue. Current efforts include partnerships through ARCH, so Regional Coalition for Housing, and participation in the regional system to serve people who are currently experiencing homelessness. And that's a coordinated entry-for-all system. The quality and health of housing is a bit more difficult to measure. Only select data about housing hazards were available for this assessment. So further inquiry to understand the condition of housing stock in Issaquah would contribute certainly to this area of work. Some examples of investments other communities have made in the region include work in fair housing, home repair programs, and preservation efforts, as well as landlord outreach and code enforcement. Our third theme is around barriers to accessing services and resources. So access to services and resources, specifically comprehensive quality, social, and health services, is important for promoting and maintaining a healthy community. Access often varies based on race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, age, sex, disability status, sexual orientation, gender identity, and residential location. Awareness of services, transportation, availability of services, insurance coverage, navigation, and culturally and linguistically appropriate services are all components of access. These are all issues that came up in the assessment. And they can lead to delays in or inability to access critical and appropriate resources and services. So focus group participants and interviewees noted that Issaquah and East King County, more generally, has a decentralized service landscape, especially for residents with disabilities, seniors, and individuals and families experiencing homelessness, as well as those who are low-income and immigrant and refugee groups. So many agencies, they noted, do not have a physical location in Issaquah, but rather elsewhere on the east side, limiting services and creating access issues for our residents, particularly those who are low-income, disabled, and senior populations, and those without a car, and therefore relying on public transportation to get between home, services, employment, potentially childcare, and other resources. The 2016-2019 Area Agency on Aging Area Plan also identified transportation as a top need for older adults, say it as their third highest, greatest need, and for adults with disabilities, being their number-one need. Transportation, parking, and roads were also identified as an issue for immigrant and refugee communities in King County's Immigrant and Refugee Task Force report. I know you know transportation well. So additionally, many assessment participants, especially those facing a number of access challenges, expressed a need for help navigating the complex Health and Human Services service systems. Assessment participants described an information and communication gap between service providers, residents, and the city, such that residents didn't know about services that were readily available to them in their own community, let alone the greater east side in King County. Data from the Public, oh, excuse me, Department of Public Health did show that in 2014, Issaquah had a much lower percentage of adults who have unmet health needs due to costs compared to King County. But we did hear from focus group and key informant interview participants that cost wasn't necessarily a significant barrier for health services, but rather that a shared perception that there is a limited number of providers in Issaquah that accept public insurance, such as Medicaid or Apple Care, particularly for dental and behavioral health care, and particularly for adults. Limited availability of behavioral health care, especially psychiatrists, was discussed by many participants. They shared a perception that availability was limited for everyone, but again, especially for those on public health insurance. They also discussed long wait times for services, and again, services outside of the city.
So I am struck by that there's no counselors that accept Medicaid. And I wonder, this is an area where I'd be curious, if we have the data, how we compare to other cities on the east side. Is this a fundamental problem? Is, you know, are there just not a lot of counselors that take Medicaid, period? And so we're just like everybody else? Or is it a unique characteristic of ours?
It's a great question, and I can certainly work to find the data behind it. In general, countywide, there's an issue with access to behavioral health, particularly for those on Medicaid. And so this is work that's new to us, but Accountable Communities of Health, right, the Medicaid Integration Project for Physical and Behavioral Health, is aiming to help address some of those barriers to getting folks connected to services. But also, still, there's that question of simply the capacity of the system and increasing it.
Is that true specifically for drug counseling within sort of the ecosystem of counseling? Because, you know, we talk a lot about our efforts to, you know, break the cycle of drug abuse and its public health benefits. And if, you know, if there aren't drug treatment counselors, if there aren't people who specialize in dealing with drug addiction, then it would make it that much harder for low-income folks to break that cycle.
Absolutely. So I don't know if specifically for drug counseling. But again, in behavioral health, we did hear more about resources related to, and also for co-occurring issues for individuals who may have both a mental illness and substance use disorder. So I'm making a note about the data on drug counseling specifically, and want to also share these quotes. And some additional data. Yeah, I think we've covered all the data on behavioral health that we have. Certainly hearing from folks that there is a perception of stigma that also can create a barrier to behavioral health. And we'll talk about that a bit more in the next theme. So just to wrap up findings from our third theme, participants also shared a perception that healthcare in Issaquah was more focused on treatment services than prevention, so wanting to get services more upstream. And some shared the perception that Issaquah residents were often pushed to seek services outside of Issaquah, especially for issues related to mental health and substance abuse due to a lack of community awareness, and in some cases, by a desire to not have service seekers in the community. And also, existing and new cultural groups in Issaquah face unique language and cultural access issues. Assessment participants discussed the need for increasing and improving services for immigrants, especially the need for translator services, and increasing the availability of languages in which services are generally provided. So when we think about this theme and potential work down the road, some implications for us to consider. Historically, the city's played a direct role in supporting the provision of services for the community, such as providing for the use of city land for the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. That's one example. And consideration of a human services campus with that work, being recent past work. Further explanation of opportunity, exploration of opportunities and consideration to improve the local network of services provided in Issaquah would certainly contribute to positive health outcomes, again, reducing barriers to access. That could include updates to inventories of city-owned property, and assessment of priorities for community uses, and facilitating colocation opportunities for service providers within the community. The city's done quite a bit of work in the area of transportation. For example, working to improve circular transit service, more frequent connections with regional employment centers, and transit-oriented development. Further work to understand a range of mobility solutions and how they could be tailored for targeted populations could help reduce barriers to accessing services, resources, employment for those groups, as well as the community overall, right? That's a benefit that the entire community would receive. Additionally, the city's human services element of the comprehensive plan provides the most comprehensive policy direction for addressing human services needs in the community. And the city's Human Services Commission takes a significant role in implementing those policies so we can think about how we leverage their capacity, particularly in those years when they're not reading through grant applications for funding. Okay, so move us on to our fourth theme, which is behavioral health norms and resources. So a person's behavioral health is shaped by various social, economic, and physical environments operating at different stages of life. Additionally, risk factors for many behavioral health issues are strongly associated with social inequalities, such as the greater... And so the greater the social inequality, the higher the inequity and risk as well. While most assessment participants focus on upstream determinants, behavioral health was the major downstream element that they called out across focus groups and interviews. And mental health in particular was brought up in every focus group and by almost every interviewee. And in particular, participants discussed mental health amongst youth in Issaquah. And so that's where we wanted to call out figure nine here in the slides. Risk of suicide among Issaquah School District high school youth stands out as the most concerning of the data. In 2016, over a quarter of 12th graders in Issaquah self-reported seriously considering suicide, higher than the proportion in King County. And that's also an increase from the data seen in 2014. And while suicide ideation has increased among 12th graders, self-reported suicide attempts among seniors as well decreased between 2014 and 2016. And so this just presents another area where we really want to have better understanding of what that data is telling us. Participants described issues of anxiety, stress, and depression for both youth and adults. Specific groups that participants identified as being particularly vulnerable to mental health issues in Issaquah were immigrants and low-income households. Also shared was the perception that immigrants were experiencing higher levels of mental health issues because of concerns surrounding citizenship status and unknown implications of the current political climate. Participants identified a need for providers that could deliver culturally competent mental health care for Issaquah's growing Asian and Hispanic populations. While participants shared the perception that substance use and addiction were not as prevalent in Issaquah compared to other communities, they also shared that they perceived a lack of understanding and awareness about the issue among community members. They shared that a lack of acknowledgement among community, the stigma, and limited access to services contributed to behavioral health concerns that they saw and may prevent residents from seeking services. Again, additional resources and access for young people from low-income families or those with public insurance was called out for behavioral health specifically. And so when we think about the implications for work in this body of work within behavioral health, this is definitely, I think, the area the city has had the least experience or direct work with. And so is the newest territory to consider. Additionally, you know, social attitudes towards the consumption of substances and mental illness make behavioral health a really complex community issue. Tension between the range of factors affecting behavioral health can create a challenging environment for open dialogue and, more importantly, may prevent individuals from seeking care. So increased awareness of behavioral health issues may help to address some of that tension and open dialogue within the community. Future exploration could include developing a better understanding of risk and protective factors, particularly for youth. And then, as I mentioned, Accountable Community of Health, so at the King County level, is a part of the Medicaid waiver project. And this is where I'm really getting outside of my area of expertise. There's a five-year demonstration project that'll be going through 2020. And so the major body of work there for King County and across the state will be to integrate physical and behavioral healthcare systems. And so the idea there is that whatever door you go into, whatever your health needs are, you'll be able to access them. Along with that core project, there are also going to be some pilot projects. And depending on which of the eight projects are selected by King County, Accountable Community of Health, there may be some opportunities there for Issaquah to try to really coordinate and support providers. For example, if they're, they end up going with a care coordination pilot project, that may be one that would be beneficial for us to be kind of at the table for. And so that kind of concludes the four major themes. And I'm going to invite David back up to talk a little bit about next steps and then really open it up. And I know that was a lot, a lot of data and a lot of content, so I appreciate your time.
So real quick, I know we're short on time. That for sure is a lot of data, lots of lingo, lots of topics, a lot of information. We're happy to kind of dissect that at a later point or answer any questions tonight because there's some really important information in there. This is, just wanted to make the point that really what we're doing is a body of work that was informed by our community advisory group, looking at some data, quantitative and qualitative. Next step, we want to take that information and share that out so it's more widely available. It's a resource for a number of agencies and organizations that work with the city. City does very little in terms of direct service provision by itself. It's through the work of our partner organizations that do the work. So we want to make sure that that information gets out. We see that being a big part of our grant funding process coming up, and our Human Services Commission is starting to take a look at that, starting to also look at the scoring criteria and the process that they're going to go through in preparation for next year's plan. So that'll be kind of a near-term opportunity to use some of this work. And then there's also some other opportunities in thinking about planning for next year, both in terms of some immediate things and trying to improve information access, which we heard a lot of content about, navigation assistance. Kind of how you navigate the entire human services landscape can be very, very challenging, especially when you have a number of factors that are making it more difficult for you, whether it's, you know, job, daycare, transportation, you know, a variety of kind of service needs all at once. There, we're also working with ED, Economic Development, on the transit-oriented development site, and the Opportunity Center is an opportunity to improve or expand our network of services locally as well. And so this will help to inform that process as well. And then finally, for the purpose, one of the primary purposes is the development of a strategy. Because as we know, that a lot of the work and the strategy itself is really about kind of pulling together and working with our partners to identify the appropriate roles for the city, thinking about the right policies, where can we support the work of others, excuse me, and kind of start to dive deeper into some of those unanswered questions that we're just starting to unearth. So really kind of thinking through Healthy Communities White Paper. We're at that needs assessment point we're reporting out. We would plan to go into a more detailed strategy development and engagement, do some listening and learning from the community as well, and checking back in on what we're hearing on a broader basis, and actually starting to develop a multi-year course of action so we can kind of more specifically address some of those topics. Tola.
So I commend you for this information. I think this is really, really important. I will be eager to see, when you talk about a strategy, I'll be eager to see this area under indicators and targets, really coming up with some focus areas and then having goals in terms of targets that have meat to them and that we can evaluate ourselves down the road. Set some goals, you know. Certainly not having, you know, not having rates of poverty any higher than county level, for instance, could be one, right? And then you say, okay, which, where are those pockets? Or having community safety being at least as good as countywide, and where are there areas where it exceeds that? I don't know, I'm not saying those should be the specific targets, but I look forward to seeing some hotspots identified. to seeing some hotspots identified and us taking some goals as a city towards improving those, and then eventually circling back. I think we can, we can have a challenge because of all the issues that come up in the course of running our city, but circling back to those things and really trying to see if we can make an impact on them, because these are, these are so critical to how people's perception of the strength of our community and where our community is headed.
Absolutely, thank you.
Just real quickly, thank you for the presentation, the whole report. It's a pretty impressive body of work. Thanks, a lot of people were involved. Thanks for the contribution of everybody at this just second phase of clearly what you're showing is a four-phase effort. It's very comprehensive and very thorough. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, because we started this idea back when I was on the Human Services Commission and trying to get this started. It took us, took a while, but we're finally getting there. And it's good to note, one of the things I note, I guess, is the number-one theme relates back to race and ethnicity being the biggest concern. And, and that plays out, I think, a lot in our community and seeing some of the things. If you look at the school district numbers, you see those numbers are changing, but when you get at the adult level, I don't think that community is recognizing that change. And if it wasn't for school numbers, we would not be acknowledging that. And so now we're seeing it here and seeing that that concern is there. Some of the things that could be working on from the strategy standpoint, you know, there's, there's a lot of these things that are very big to grab onto from a city perspective, right? And we can do what we can, but some of those we can grab onto a little bit and really do, you know, get those as much as we can that the city has authority to move in. Just, some of you mentioned land use code or something in one of those items. And one of the items under that was hiring and maintaining employees, you know, in our own city where we have the ability to reach out and get some of those employees of different ethnicities and so forth. Those things that we can really do locally and find out where those are, really encouraged to grab those with as much steam as we can. And then those bigger ones are a little more amorphous sometimes because they're, they're more full-society ones, are a little harder, but I think we need to work, you know, towards our piece of that as much as we can too. And it's great to see this come to fruition and go on towards a strategy to implement next. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I have to congratulate you two, and I say that with a big smile on my face because I think it's one of the best reports I've ever read since I sat on council. But now I have my sad face on. It's extremely sobering. The information in there was, I wouldn't say it's shocking, but it's really concerning. And so the congratulations is because we gave you a very broad scope and, and not the tools or the direction to go out and get your own data, and you did this all with someone else's data and were still able to put an Isqwa perspective on it. So I love the way you presented the data. I think that's fantastic. I think the group that got pulled together obviously has their pulse on the community. The reason, the second reason I like this so much was that this felt like it was coming from the community with your guidance, their voice, their issues, their concerns, their knowledge, their expertise, all showed up in here. A couple of suggestions that you can take or leave, I would love to see it more broadly circulated, except that the first part of it is written at a little bit of a high level, even for a person like me who's kind of paying attention. And so I'm not sure if methodology might be generally covered, but more explicitly covered in an appendix, because I couldn't stop reading it once I got to the data. The data was absolutely overwhelmingly compelling. The second thing is, because we're doing this at the same time that we are in a moratorium, and one of the reasons we're in a moratorium is because of the lack of housing affordability in certain areas in town, and also talking about beginning the process of really fleshing out what a housing strategy might look like, there's probably some near-term opportunities in here for us to take some actions while this is still being figured out and while metrics and targets are still being set. And so that is something I just wanted to highlight because we have an opportunity to do some things in the short term, even before you're done, that may benefit the work. But it is, by far, it was the most compelling report I've read since I got on council. Amazing work. Thank you.
Thank you. And I kind of glossed over it, but one of the things that we're talking about is developing kind of a simpler or more accessible infographic or something that can help to convey the information in a very friendly way, so.
Eileen.
I agree with everything that I've heard from the rest of my council members here. This, I don't know how long it took you to put this together, but this is a great piece of work. My next question is, okay, what next? Where do we go to from here? We've got all this information before us, and we all know that there is great need within our community, but now where do we go and how do we help with improving some of this? No answers?
Well, that is part of it. I think there are some immediate pieces where it will help inform our investments. So we might, with the Human Services Commission's help, guide how we allocate some of the resources in our granting programs, might be looking at some of our different policies. There's a body of work where we think we can help to improve information access next year. So there's, I think, some immediate things that we can do. And then kind of the bigger, because it involves kind of community-wide effort, there is kind of this community-wide level of effort that city has a role in, and then there's things that we can influence more directly. So when we kind of think about indicators and performance measures and things like that and how we deliver results, the, the community-wide pieces are going to be longer and more challenging, right, and involve many actors. And so we want to start that work and do that, but then there's also some things that are more directly within our control that we can start to do sooner.
With a low-hanging fruit that we can go in and actually make a change soon, instead of, I realize that this is a document that's got great life to it, but we need to make a change and let the community and those who are in need actually see that we are working towards helping them in their lives.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we have, and I think several people in the audience tonight who are probably here for this item, and so we don't always allow public comment on all topics at our work sessions, but I see there are a lot of people here probably, probably here for this topic and may or may not have, don't know if you could have, didn't know if you could have time for comment. So if there's anybody who wants to address the council with any comments or questions about this topic, then please make your way up to the microphone.
Any comments that you have or questions that you have that you would like the council or staff to hear about the assessment? And you're welcome to have comments.
Good evening. My name's Anna Jimenez-Silva. I'm in the Human Services Commission of the city. Thank you, everyone, for your time and your effort. Martha and David, you guys are amazing, and you help the commission and the community amazing, city council too. But I still have a concern that I can't put down, and it's, if we're serving a very wide group of citizens with different ethnicities, backgrounds, and languages, I am concerned about the data, the amount of people that were interviewed to get these numbers, and a lot of the people that we're looking to serve might not have had the chance to have their input and their say in this. So I'm concerned about the accessibility in different languages of these surveys and focal groups. Thank you.
Thank you. You have to come, to come up to the microphone, so.
Hi, Jerry Blackwell with Friends of Youth, and I was part of the, the group that constructed it. And I just was kind of caught off guard by some of the questions that told us specifically when we're talking about access versus perception of access. So we do have Medicaid access for behavioral health, substance use disorder and mental health. It's, a lot of it regarded the perception of lack of access. So that's really kind of a vital key. And when we talk about things that we can do immediately in terms of conversations, when you look at, you know, Best Arts for Kids and the ideals of prevention, prevention is difficult because prevention doesn't allow you to access direct service money. So prevention goes very, very rapidly in any kind of budget structures, right? Somebody goes, oh, wait, what do we get out of that? We get people better down the line? Well, that's not right now. And so how do we go about funding and constructing a model that appreciates that, right, that, you know, educating fifth graders is valuable in terms of behavioral health, even though you might not see it until they're in high school? And that's a difficult sell when money is short. So I kind of, you know, wanted to touch on that a little bit and, and kind of think about how we can communicate more rapidly that there is the availability of services within our structures and get people to those structures. Because when you think of Medicaid and Medicare, we're not even allowed to have wait lists, you know, 10 days until an appointment needs to be filled, because that's part of the obligations that we have to access that. So there's always access to services, but the perception, obviously, is that that's not necessarily the case. So those are really easy little kind of low-hanging fruits issues, so to speak. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Thank you, Martha and David, and thanks, everybody who came for this topic, appreciate it, and everybody who was involved in this work. Next on the agenda, end of certain development agreements, specifically Isqwa Highlands and Talis, presented by Lucy Sloman, Land Developer, Development Manager.
Just letting things settle down a little bit. So Lucy Sloman, Land Development Manager. This is kind of our introduction for you. We are getting into the process in terms of reviewing code, but we thought before we had to hearing with PPC, it would be great to have a conversation with council about the way we're approaching this and get your feedback. There were two documents that you received. One is the PowerPoint that we're presenting tonight. The other is a chart. The chart is just kind of background information. We're happy to talk about anything, but that's not the, I'm not going through that, so feel free to ask questions as things come up. So just to recap our history, in April and May, we started working with the homeowners' associations and the urban village communities in which the development agreements are ending, and made a presentation to the Council Land and Shore Committee. And then, starting in August, we were introducing and reviewing draft language. Just to refresh your memory, Talis is the area on the right, surrounded in a yellow dash line. Isqwa Highlands is on the left in red. There are two other development agreements that are incorporated into that. The pink is where the YWCA and Sea Home are. The green is what's called the Wash.TDR development agreement. Bellevue College is part of the Wash.TDR development agreement, but we are not ending that portion of the development agreement because that's not built. But the rest of the, what we call the TOD and Wash.TDR development agreements are built out, and so that's why we're proposing to include them as part of this effort to end the Isqwa Highlands and Talis development agreements. Question?
Bellevue College within the Wash.DA, are we not ending that because it's not built or because that DA goes longer?
Right. So that's a good point. The TOD and Wash.TDR development agreements don't end for many years. And so we're just ending those portions that are completely built out and where the development agreement isn't really relevant, and keeping it in place for the property that has yet to build out, which is the Bellevue College property.
Thanks.
So we have four goals that we're, we've been using in the work that we're doing. First was to retain the character of each development, urban village. Second was to create as few non-conforming situations as we could. Third was to replace very old development agreement standards with current city regulations to the greatest extent we could, where we weren't going to significantly impact character. And lastly, we're consolidating the TOD and Wash.TDR development agreements under Isqwa Highlands. And part of the reason why we're proposing to do that is both of those development agreements rely, to some extent, on the Isqwa Highlands Development Agreement. For instance, the architectural review committees already are reviewing the buildings, the sign codes. Many of the urban design guidelines were taken from the Isqwa Highlands Urban Design Guidelines. So those development agreements, while distinct and separate, were related to and/or dependent on the Isqwa Highlands Development Agreement. Yes?
So I guess I'm just a little confused there. I understand what you're saying, but if the Highlands Development Agreement is going away, are you keeping that under the Highlands Development Agreement regulations?
So for all the area that is in red, it will be governed by the replacement regulations. Part of the replacement regulations is keeping the Isqwa Highlands and Talis goals and the Isqwa Highlands and Talis Urban Design Guidelines. So instead of keeping the TOD, I wish we had better terms, the TOD and Wash.TDR guidelines, we're going to place them under Isqwa Highlands' guidelines and goals, for instance.
So you're in a sense modifying those development agreements?
Right. We're modifying, well, we're terminating the TOD. There won't be anything left of that. For Wash.TDR, parcels one, two, and three would be under Isqwa Highlands' regulations. Parcel four is Bellevue College, and it would stay under the development agreement for the term of the development agreement.
So Lucy, for the Wash. development agreement, is there remaining affordable housing allotment that stays with the Bellevue College property because it wasn't all used yet?
So there, the affordable housing component was not part of the Bellevue College property. It's, that's all institutional use, at least in the ownership of Bellevue College.
So if Wash. had 50 units of affordable housing in there, entitled to certain properties, and we didn't use it all, then we won't get the remainder?
Oh, so the affordable housing, if I'm remembering this correctly, the affordable housing component of that development agreement was Track D, which has been relocated to, down to the town center. And Track D is going to be market-rate housing. So to-
I just got to go back.
I'm sorry.
I'm just not clear yet on, on what's happening with the shift of, of using the, the outgoing Highlands Agreement standards with the TOD. So you're, you're going to modify that with those agreements, right? Because it's still going on, it doesn't end. You have to be updating that somehow or doing something, otherwise how are you applying rules to that, that, of an agreement that's going away?
So I got a little lost in the pronouns.
Okay.
So the TOD property, which is where the YWCA and Sea Home are located, is completely built out.
Right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
And it was, its development agreement was substantially based on the Isqwa Highlands Development Agreement. The land was actually pulled out of the Isqwa Highlands Development Agreement, and they wrote a separate development agreement to facilitate doing a project with the YWCA and the net-zero development. So just like if we added new property to the city and we had to apply zoning regulations to that, even though it had King County regulations when it was outside the city, and we're bringing it inside the city and applying city regulations, we're taking TOD, the TOD projects, and applying Isqwa Highlands regulations to those. That didn't answer your question.
But those are going away.
What is those?
The Isqwa Highlands- The, the Isqwa Highlands development agreement is going away.
Right.
So my question is, how are you, as that goes away, you're saying you're going to apply those regulations to this, to Wash.D, and I'm going, how can you apply something that's going away to something? So you, that's what I'm trying to get at--
Now, I understand. I think I understand your question. Let me try this. The development is growing away. We are proposing various replacement regulations that will cover Isqwa Highlands and Talis, and these two other areas, TOD, Wash.TDR, would not have separate regulations. They would have the same replacement regulations that are being applied to Isqwa Highlands. Sure.
So, so, but we're saying we're keeping the development agreement. That's, so--
So think about, think about all this land is either covered by a development agreement or city code.
Right.
And so what we're doing is we're taking everything in Isqwa Highlands, everything in Talis, everything in the TOD area, and then most of Wash.D, and we're taking them out of the development agreement bucket and putting them into city code bucket. The only thing that's left behind is Bellevue College. Does that help?
There you go. That's what I'm saying. Bellevue College is--
Still under a development agreement after we adopt these new regulations for the rest of all of that land up there.
That development agreement is a name on that one?
Wash.TDR development agreement. And the reason is, is because Bellevue College is, even though it's undeveloped, their entitlement goes until 2025, and we felt like that was enough time that we should just let it lie.
All right. So Bellevue College will be under its continued TOD, not TDR, excuse me, TDR--
Yes.
--agreement, and then everything else, these other ones, are going to all go to the new codes?
Yes.
There you go. Versus going under, I thought it was, I was hearing you saying going under the Highlands Development Agreement, which I couldn't understand.
Sorry.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
shorthand. Okay. So where are they going? We are proposing various kinds of, or various sources of replacement regulations. For some of the existing components of the development agreement, we're proposing just to terminate them. There, for instance, there is no more quarrying going on, so we don't need quarry standards. The main bodies of the development agreements were the contract. We don't need those anymore. If there's elements that seem relevant, we'll put them, we'll retain those in city code. The second bucket of replacement regulations is using things that already exist in the IMC. Critical areas, SEPA, utilities, some of those we've already been using, but we're fully switching over to using the IMC for those. A lot of the regulations will come from central Isqwa. The reason is, the central Isqwa standards are very much related to urban village regulations, both Isqwa Highlands and Rowley in particular. And so the, these are good, they are analogous to things that are already in place from the development agreement. However, there are some regulations that we feel are important for maintaining that urban village character that we've talked about. And so those will go into a new code section, 1819B. 1819A is central Isqwa, so 1819B, we're proposing be the replacement regulations for these terminated development agreements. We're starting with the goals and guidelines. We're just retaining those appendices from the development agreement unchanged, except for any modifications that have been approved. There are about three. Land use standards, parks, plazas, and trails, and then a couple of small standards like Vunurfs, because the city does not have Vunurf standards. Each of these urban villages has Vunurfs. So we've written some standards to cover those situations.
Question, Lucy, on process. So this is our introduction tonight, and at some point, this will go to Council, Land and Shore Council, said path. So I guess, um, when I was looking at this third column over today, um, had a hard time with it. We're in a moratorium because we didn't, because we're adjusting the SIDS, because we didn't get what we wanted on the valley floor. So to see it pop up as being the model of what we want to do in the urban villages kind of surprised me. I think for, just as, just sort of throwing it out there for future conversations, I would like to see, for everything that we're not sure, I, the IMC works, or the development agreement, can do, standards work, I'd like to see a table that shows me why what's in the SIDS is better or will get us a better product than what was in the agreement. I'm having a hard time jumping to using SIDS for anything. So I, instead of just putting it in the buckets of here's where it's coming from, I want to know why we're leaving the development agreement and going to SIDS, why it's going to be better afterwards.
So did the table that was part of the packet not help with that?
Not enough, I would say.
Okay.
No, sorry. And then I had one other comment, and that was that, just in the avoiding unintended consequences thought, not everything turned out the way we thought it would turn out in both of the village. Some stuff we liked, some stuff didn't quite work, and kind of want to see part of the conversation of how do we address those aspects where the, the development agreements did not produce the kind of product that we thought it would? Where are we going to now take this opportunity to improve our control so that we don't repeat things that we don't think worked 100%?
Okay. Okay.
And just a little bit more on that. Again, a little concern there, particularly on adjustment of standards under the SIDS. So just looking to see, we're supposed to have, um, just as the same or more restrictive, not, you know, less so, and I, I thought there was more room for adjustments in there under SIDS than we had before. So I want to make sure that we don't have more room for adjustment. Now, there's not much left to, to be built out, and I realize that, but I also want to think about it. I don't want to have more room for adjustment than, than what we have already.
So, um, and, and we have looked at that somewhat there, the development agreements had a tool called, I mean, of course, it has a different name, Administrative Minor Modification or an AMM. And the criteria are quite similar, and the kinds of things that you could modify compared to an AAS are quite similar. So I don't think we're giving any additional flexibility that we didn't have. We'll actually probably have less flexibility than we did under the development agreement. But we, would it help you to see the criteria compared? Okay.
It would.
We've already done that for our own internal purposes, so--
Great, thank you.
Lucy, regarding the table, you, when I figured it out, a lot of lights went on because you have one column for the DAs and then for the TOD and then for the Wash.TDR. So, okay, those are the four existing, then the proposed new source. Okay, okay. So if it was parking for Isqwa Highlands, it was section or paragraph O. If it was Talis, it was P. If it was the TOD, it was F. Okay, all of those are going to be replaced by IMC 1819A and chapters eight and 15 of the central Isqwa design standards. So when I figured that out, it started to make more sense. It helped me quite a bit. I also then assumed, to Mary Lou's point, especially, actually, parking is the one that jumped out at me, that it's whatever we update those standards to be. So what, it's, it's not what they are like today, well, it is what they are today, and then whatever we ever modify them to be. So we're updating the parking standard. So whatever the, you know, that's, it says chapters eight and 15 for parking. So that, those are the ones that will apply.
Right. And, and that's going to be a new thing for the urban villages because, you know, the standards were vested under the development agreement, and so it was, it was a bilateral decision to make any changes. Both the master developer and the city had to agree before a change could be made to the development agreement. But now the urban villages are coming into the way the rest of the city operates, which means that with a public hearing, the city makes a decision after they've heard from the community.
And I have a question from Mary Lou. Mary Lou, you mentioned a moment ago, like, things that didn't work. Could you--
Sure.
--touch upon a couple of those?
Yeah, I'll give you one example, and that is that, um, and this is just me going by what I've heard from people. I don't think that there is any report or anything on it. There was an assumption that the, that that would be a walking, biking type community, not car-focused. And so the amount of on-street parking is kind of shocking. And for those, the amount of on-street parking that occurs is kind of shocking. And so if you live on 24th or 25th, which is supposed to be a two-lane road, and you have cars up and down both sides, will drive down the center. And part of it, in speaking with Lucy before, is that when you're in an urban setting, having cars on both sides does tend to act like traffic calming. But for those that live up there and have two cars, they're concerned about parking standards. So if we're going to adopt a parking standard where a developer under SIDS can actually provide less parking per unit than they can currently in the Highlands, the Highlands residents would be upset about that. And so that is kind of an example of an unintended consequence or something that may not have worked out quite as we thought. Also, in construction standards, driveway opens were greatly shortened, and so in many cases, you have cars that park over the sidewalk or cars that are parked in front of the garage doors that poke into the alleyway, and all of those things cause concerns for people in terms of getting up and down lanes. So do, did everything work out the way it should have, and does it make sense to jump to another standard because it'll make it better? I'm not sure that the parking standard actually in SIDS does make sense. This is a quick example.
Thank you.
So yes, we are updating some of the SIDS. One of the, two of the items, adjustment of standards and procedures, are not being updated right now. But I know there's been at least a little bit of passive talk about maybe needing to do that because maybe we need to have a higher level of review. And so that would be an example of something that even though we are getting, um, yes, they would come under SIDS. If you're proposing that a lot of these items come under SIDS, we're not necessarily proposing changes at this time for those items. And so that would be, to the point that the two council members on either side of me have mentioned, the adjustment of standards, and it may be processing major mods as well. Those aren't actually in the works. And so if we have something under SIDS that we already have a little bit of concern about, but it's not on the work plan to have it revised, then that would be an area that I'd like to hear more about.
Okay? So just to explain sort of the technique we're using, the way the urban villages were developed did not use traditional zoning, so you didn't have, for instance, 5,000 square foot, so, you know, 5,000 square foot zone. So we, in one area, could have lots of many different sizes, and rather than try and calculate the smallest size or the largest size or the average size, we have approached this with a somewhat different methodology. So if you consider that you have the property, then on top of the property is the zoning. Zoning is what is common between all those properties. It might be your setbacks, your height, uses, things that are generic between all the properties with that zone. The overlay represents your entitlement. So for single-family lots, that means that we aren't as concerned about the size of the lot. It's, if you have a single-family lot, you get to put one house on it, and that's it. If you choose to short-plant it, you could short-plant it, but you will have no entitlement to put on that second lot. So what it says is, what was planned for this community, what the infrastructure was built for, that's what you get. So another example would be a multifamily project. Again, all the multifamily parcels would have the same land use standards, height, setback uses, but each multifamily parcel would have an overlay that identified the amount of entitlement that belongs with that property. So this piece might be 135, this piece might be 10. They're both zoned multifamily, but this is the entitlement that they purchased. This is how much of the total allowable development that the community was planned for, that you have purchased, which you can build. Properties like parks would have zero entitlement, but it would still have a zone on it to explain what was allowed to happen on that property. Changes in the future, any overlay or zoning changes would require council action, which is similar to a major modification. You can't change the entitlement of the community without going back to council. We did have some conversations with the two communities about TDRs. Talis, right now, does not allow any use of TDRs. Isqwa Highlands does, and the community right now is open to the idea that non-single-family parcels could use TDRs, but that's a conversation we would obviously have to have with the council. And the way it's proposed right now, that could only happen if the council approves it. So it would not be an administrative action as it is in some other parts of the city. It would require the council review and approve it.
So, um, in keeping in line with the complim vision that says focused density on the valley floor, why would we want to go with that scenario where there's still an option to add density other where than, other places than the valley floor?
So I don't know that we would have to allow it, but I think the other question is, do, do we want these to be absolutely static? I mean, that's a policy conversation to have with the council. I think we are simply putting this in as an opportunity to have that conversation and to make that decision consciously. I don't think that we have to do it. But I think some of the property owners are interested in being able to have, they aren't planning on doing anything now, but I think they would like the ability to make changes in the future. Maybe that isn't through TDRs, maybe that is just through requesting an upzone. I mean, each of them would require going to council.
Lucy? Are you talking about TDRs anywhere else in your presentation?
Uh, only when I talk about council modification. So it's fine, go ahead.
Okay. So the, one of the meetings that you had in Isqwa Highlands, I remember there was a brief mention of one potential possibility for having, maybe I should back up, that the, right now, it's a receiving site?
Yes.
So would that change?
Well, I, we're not proposing on changing it as part of this process, but obviously the outcome of this process will tell us if we need to change the map.
Okay. One of the reasons that was floated as a possibility for keeping a portion of the Highlands TDR receiving site was, so in Grand Ridge Plaza area, there is the community's, I'll just make generalization, feeling that the plaza wasn't developed as it was originally envisioned, not dense enough, not Redmond, you know, town center-like enough.
Right.
And the, there seemed to be, of the people who were there, there seemed to be some positive reaction to that.
Yes. Right. And I mean, I think that one of the things that, just as a sort of philosophical or philosophical, one way of thinking about Grand Ridge Plaza is that those surface parking lots are future building pads if a garage is built. So if that is part of something, so we said non-single-family. Maybe it's non-residential. Maybe it is just areas that are zoned with retail entitlement. I mean, I think that is the policy conversation to have, is if that is a possibility to consider in the future, how do we capture that in the code to indicate that, that is what the process and areas in which that would be considered moving forward?
So just to verify, what we're just saying is the, the TDR receiving site issue is not, just not being considered with this part at all? That'd be, that'd be a second topic at another time.
Well, I think what we're doing, we are considering it in terms of where-- Well, I think what we're doing, we are considering it in terms of where, and where, if anywhere, it would be appropriate to use it, and what process it would go through. Then based on that conversation, subsequently, we would update the maps to match that decision.
Thank you. Question?
Yeah.
Your use of the word overlay, so what is, what is overlay? I mean, I can go to any community and talk about zoning, and people are going to know what I'm talking about. I'm not enough of an expert in what you do to know if overlay is, I mean, it sounds like it's, okay, it's, this parcel had entitlement, and whether you used it or not, if you had, were entitled for 10, but you built 5, I've just made that up.
Yeah.
Is the overlay, would it be 10 or 5? That would be my first question. The second one would be, what's the mechanism for that? I mean, it's, how do you, how do you, how will we enforce that entitlement once the DA is gone?
So overlays are a common planning technique. This particular use of overlay is unusual. Jim Haney hadn't seen it before. He thought it was a good technique, given some of the challenges we have, which is that it's not like you, in other parts of the city, where you'll have a large neighborhood that is all zoned for 5,000 square foot lots. Because we might have large lots across the street from small lots, and the variation of lots, even in one division, could be by thousands of square feet. And so to try and calculate all those sizes and put traditional zoning on, which is based on the size of the lot, would have been a big undertaking, and we didn't think provided us with a lot of value. The overlay, especially in single-family, allows us to capture the entitlement regardless of the size of the lot. And in multifamily and non-residential areas, it allows us to show exactly what that property purchased. Now, to speak to the question that you raised, if you bought 10 and you've built 5, what we're proposing is that, actually, I'm going to take a step back, because what you said is, what is the mechanism? So we have a map, looks like a zoning map, it's got colors on it. And, and then following that, each of the non-single-family parcels have a number, and that number coincides to a chart that follows. And it says for this number, say 56, there's a parcel number, so we have a legal thing that we can tie it to. We give a common name, we give the zoning, and we give the entitlement that they've purchased. And so, for some, they've built everything, you know, like if they have 135, and they've built 135, then that's very simple. But we do have a fair number of parcels in which they have built all but not, most but not all of their entitlement. And so that chart shows that for that property, they built 125 units, and there are 10 units left, which they could choose to build on that property at a future time.
So are we proposing the overlay be, in your example, 125 or 135?
It would be 135, and then the detail for that property would say 125 built, 10 unbuilt.
Okay, so the overlay is the entitlement?
Yes.
Thank you.
This one, I'm not sure Lucy if it's for you or for Keith, but I thought the original overlay zone, which I saved a map from last year, was you get what you have.
Right.
Not that you get what you could have had, but you get what you have. If you build 125 houses, where you could have built 135, it's 125. Because to me, there's some lack of certainty for a homeowner now on that street, that 10 houses won't come down, and 10 town duplexes will go up. Like, I don't, I'm thinking it's sort of shifted from what I heard last year, it landed shore.
The intent was not to shift. I think that that has been the way we've done it. I, the way we were intending to describe it. All the, well, except for some stuff in Westridge, all the plating is complete. So you can see where every single lot is now, and you would know where every single, single-family home could be built. In terms, in terms of unbuilt entitlement, I think it is mostly non-residential, although there is, you know, for instance, Discovery Heights has a pad where they are entitled to build a 2,500 square foot building, and they haven't chosen to build it yet. Or there hasn't been the market to build it, I don't know which is the case. There are also several parcels that have not been built, which are in the process of going through land use permits right now. So for those, they may not have built those by the end of the year, and I don't think we're proposing to take that title, entitlement away from them.
Okay, that does sound familiar to what I heard last year. I guess what I'm asking is, where you have a parcel property owner who has not used his entitlement and chosen to build less on the same number of lots, does that entitlement disappear, or could they come back and redo some properties to add density? I'm trying to look for certainty for the people who live in the neighborhoods, that if they bought into a single-family neighborhood, it stays a single-family neighborhood?
There is, of course, I'm doing this from memory, but there is no single-family neighborhood except Tractee and Westridge that I can think of where there is, are lots that are not built out. And, and-
So I think, so I think the problem is, the example that she went over with Paul was fictitious. That's not, there's no scenario where somebody has 135 and only built 125, and still has 10 in their pocket. There isn't that case anywhere. So, so what we have is unbuilt, and so like parcel 19, which is across the street from the Ram, that's a residential parcel, it's currently unbuilt, there's a certain entitlement there, and they're either going to have their land use permit, and will, will have a certain number there, which may or may not be the maximum that they bought. If not, that number that they bought will be there. But for all the other development subdivisions and multifamily, what their entitlement will be is what they purchased. From a residential standpoint, I think Lucy gave you the one example, which was the retail for-
And so, let me, let's do this. I'd like to pause this, because I do have a map showing unbuilt properties. So that may be easier to run through, any kind of concerns and scenarios you have, to make sure, it may be easier if we're actually looking at a map.
My concern really was for neighborhoods that were built out, but the total entitlement under the development agreement, for whatever reason, wasn't chosen. Could somebody come back and alter the character of an existing neighborhood, and what, that's already built? And what I'm hearing is no.
Right.
Oh. Just a little more question, follow-up on Paul's there. So, because in your wording here, it says zoning requires council action. Does changing the overlay would then also require council action?
Yes.
You hinted at that, but it's not written here.
Yes, it's not a hinge, it's a fact.
It's a fact. Okay. So, so then just getting back to the units required, just, again, fictitious, but if you had, you know, 10 units on a place, and you tore it down, you could build 10 units twice that size somehow, or you know, if you fit them on there, you wouldn't be entitled to more units, you could build larger units or something. The entitlement is still 10, right? So that wouldn't change. Or a larger house on a single, you know, you could increase the size of the house, that entitlement would stay the same. The size is not so much restricted by the overlayment, it could be by the zoning, because you had a height restriction and that, that kind of stuff.
Right.
But as long as you met those, and you met the entitlement, you could change that, that function of that.
Right. Which I think reduces the likelihood, unless buildings are wearing out, it's not probably worth tearing something down and rebuilding the same number of units, unless you want just a bigger home.
Just clarifying that, thank you.
Yeah.
On the chart you're showing, would it be correct to say, if instead of the word property on that lower block, if it just said parcel, is it at the granularity of the parcel? So entitlements are assigned to parcels?
Yes.
Okay, so that, I think that would help declare it a little bit?
Okay.
Because everything we're talking about is at the parcel level.
Yes.
There's not some other unit of collection of land beyond that, we're trying to manage. We're managing parcels. I mean, heard this conversation with zoning and overlay. Thank you.
Well, and I also, to take Councilmember Polly's point, you know, you're going to see this, this aerial with unbuilt properties highlighted on it, but I do think that what you're highlighting is that as we move forward, that, you know, we're focused on code, but there's this chart that's going to be back behind the zoning map, which no, you know, most citizens are never going to dig into. And so it seems like part of your point is to include that kind of unbuilt property map in some form in our presentations, so that it's easily accessible to people to understand where activities are still occurring, and which things are relatively fixed. So, just, I have three slides of key points to just highlight. We've already talked about the fact that we're proposing a new Section 1819B, that the existing goals and guidelines, that those documents would be attached to 1819B. We're not proposing any changes to those. In terms of community facilities, you know, we associate those with public agencies, such as the school district, fire district, the city, property is zoned, community facilities. We're proposing a new zone, CFPO for privately owned, for properties that the homeowners association owns, because those are essentially kind of like a public agency. We want those to be clear on the map. We would want a community conversation if those properties were changing. And so we feel that this kind of zone is the best way to capture that intent, and have a community conversation if things change. Question?
So, the, what about other HOAs, other areas in the city where we have HOA-owned properties?
So this is only within these replacement regulations. We could certainly talk about that. But there are so many, as, as part of like the master parks plan that was done with Issaquah Highlands, everything but three city-owned parks, all those parks are privately owned. And so it's just part of, I think, communicating to the community that those parks are part of, an essential part of the community character, and to protect them through this process.
Interesting.
Just that the title, community, community facilities, privately owned, just seemed like an oxymoron, but, you know, community facilities, HOA-owned, or something, another way to characterize who the owner is, to say it privately. But I appreciate what you're trying to do with it. It was just the title that I-
Okay.
-come up about.
Bill?
I'm going to back up just a little bit. So, we were talking previously on our housing strategy. One of the big pushes was to allow more ADUs, right? And so my question is, as we define these here, would ADUs be a possibility or not if it's single-family?
So ADUs are allowed in single-family. We, we are actually, the ADU standards in the urban villages are different than the ADU standards in the city. We're proposing to defer, I mean, allow the urban village ADU standards to lapse, and wait for the housing strategy to decide the best way to regulate ADUs. But there are already ADUs in both Talis and Issaquah Highlands. They would now come under the IMC until such time as the city chooses to, you know, decides how they want to move forward. And Arch has been given the IMC standards, the urban village standards, and some other community standards to make a recommendation to us on the best way to move forward for ADUs.
And so we're talking, whatever we come up with ADUs in our housing strategy, we would be applying to these units as the plan? That's my question.
Yes.
So what we're proposing is one residential unit and an ADU per lot?
So what he said was, we're proposing one residential unit and one ADU per lot. So we're allowing ADUs in all residential, with all single-family residential entitlement.
All single families allow ADUs?
Yes.
As we're looking to try to get to on our strategy.
Sorry, I gave you way more information that you didn't need.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we are doing two new standards, one of which I mentioned, which is the VUNIRF standards. As I said, there are VUNIRFs in all four of these urban villages. We don't have a comparable standard in the city, but we have been sort of, we've sort of developed by custom standards. I have written those up and reviewed them with Public Works Engineering, Public Works Operation, and Eastside Fire and Rescue, and they've all given us comments. In terms of single-family and townhomes on individual lots, there's one standard in central Issaquah, and pretty much no standards in the rest of the city related to garages, driveways, front doors. So we have written some standards to try and retain the way the urban villages were developed relative to these homes on individual lots. And then, home occupation standards are slightly, not slightly, they're somewhat different between the urban villages and the rest of the city. We are proposing to retain the home occupation standards, because, at least for the short term, because we want to, if we're going to change those standards, we want to have a conversation with the people who would be impacted by it. And it's just a really hard thing to do while we're trying to do all these changes. So we're proposing to keep these in place, and then in a year or two, sit down and have a conversation with the community to figure out if we can come to one set of standards throughout the city. Parks, plazas, and trails, very big component in all of the communities. For existing parks, and the three required town center plazas in Issaquah Highlands, we're requiring that they stay, and that it would be a council action to remove or reduce them. So we are doing, not dissimilar to what we're doing with the entitlement, we are actually doing an inventory of the parks in Talis, TOD, Washdott, and Issaquah Highlands. It'll be tied to parcel or a specific square footage and mapped within the community. Trails are also required to remain. We will allow them to be reduced and removed, but it is a public process. The intent is to keep them, but we recognize that there may need to be changes, and that we want a level-two process where there is public notice and the possibility of public comment before any of those changes would be approved. For new developments, we are proposing a minimum square footage per dwelling unit. The numbers come from that inventory of parks in the two communities. These are provisional numbers right now, we're double-checking. I've been working with staff who've been doing this inventory. So we are going back through the numbers, and this number is based on what has been built to date. So it's not a new number, it is simply sort of codifying what is, has already been built in the community. And then lastly, in recognition of some of the things that the city has done in terms of recognizing the need for public spaces in non-residential areas, we have proposed non-residential requirement for plazas of 60 square feet per 1,200 square feet of use.
How does that, is that similar or different than what's required today, and what's actually been built out?
So, this number came from looking at the two required plazas that were built in Grand Ridge Plaza compared to the square footage built in Grand Ridge Plaza. Does that, did that make sense, what I said?
Or maybe it did, and I just need to hear it again.
No, let me say it again. So there's a certain amount of square footage that is in Grand Ridge Plaza. And two out of three of the required plazas that are present at Issaquah Highlands are also in Grand Ridge Plaza. So we compared the size of those two required plazas to the square, square footage- So we compared the size of those two required plazas to the square, square footage that was allowed in Grand Ridge Plaza and said, what is the relationship between these? And it was 60 square feet per 1,200 square feet. 60 square feet of plaza to 1,200 square feet of building.
So you're trying to codify what was built?
Third and last of the key point slides, we are proposing to shift the Urban Village Development Commission to the Development Commission. We are proposing actually as of today to not do that until 2019 because of the amount of work that is currently in the queue for closing out the urban villages. We thought we would do it in May 2018, but we actually have work that would continue till into next year, probably the middle of the year. And so we are proposing that, that the Urban Village Development Commission would not go away. Its responsibilities would be combined with the Development Commission because Urban Village Development Commission is still referenced in Lakeside and Raleigh and some of the other development agreements. But that work would just be consolidated into a single Development Commission. It seems kind of unfair to maintain a body of citizens who are there to volunteer and don't have a lot of work to do. And then the second point is, many of you are familiar with the way the development agreements are written with a requirement for, if certain things are changing, there, it takes a major modification that needs to come to council. We're recommending that certain things, basically the same list as is in the development agreement, plus some others like the overlay, changes to the entitlement in the overlay, that those would have to come to council before changes are made.
I think you, I think you said this earlier, so for all, so like for TDRs, that's, is not council action today outside. And so you, in these, your urban villages, that's, so that would be different for receiving sites elsewhere within the city?
There are a collection of unbuilt properties in both urban villages. Top slide is Talis. There are four properties. Two are or will be owned by the city. Two are available for development. Emmerich was an expansion parcel. At the sort of north end, it would have access from SR 900, not through Talis, but it is currently under the development agreement. And then parcel 17B, which is Trimet, and that, actually looking at that, I'm using an old number, it's actually 516,000 square feet of commercial. In the packet that's going to go out next week, or this week, how time flies, we are going to have memorandum from the two parcels, one at Talis and one at Iskwa Highlands, where the property owner is interested in potentially changing their entitlement. Trimet, the property owner of 17B, had originally wanted to go to all residential, which has not been well-received in the community, both from the HOA and Talis community as well as the administration. And so at this point, they're looking at a mix of uses to see if that would be more appealing to both the Talis community and to the city government. And that proposal will be in the packet. At Iskwa Highlands, there are about five or six properties that are unbuilt. All of these are in process right now. Now, there's a little bit of, for instance, the Discovery Heights, small about of unbuilt entitlement, that is not reflected here. But these are the ones that are not built at all. So Track D and West Ridge were addressed through the recent TDR agreement. Block 4B, which is across from SIP and the original commercial block, the Iskwa Highlands Community Association is looking at building offices there. They own the land already and realized that when they got a tax bill, so they thought that might be a good opportunity to see if they could use that land. Blocks 19 and 20 are behind Marshalls and Dix. One is, Sumitomo is the owner of block 19, but Trammell Crowe is pursuing the development of that with 135 residential units. That's where that example came from. Block 20 is where cities, the infamous city surf is going. They will be using a small portion, as proposed right now, of their entitlement. And then Shelter Holdings has a large portion of retail, commercial, and three residential units. Shelter is, has been interested in mixed-use residential, as you probably are aware. Right now, they are looking at some options for adding assisted living to their property, and that will be a proposal that they, that will be included in the packet that goes out this week as well.
So first on the Talis one, can you tell us a little bit more about Emmerich? I'm not sure I realized there was an expansion parcel up there.
I believe it was brought under the development agreement about two years ago. It's, I think, got a single-family house on it now. It has some steep slopes to the west side, so, and there is no, you know, obviously you can see all the homes along the edge of Talis, so it would not be possible to connect into the community. So as I mentioned, I, I believe they have an easement through a property to a consolidated driveway to access the property. We have not done much on that property. I think they're waiting to see how this process plays out.
What was the entitlement on that one?
24 residences.
Oh, sorry, you have that there. And the parcel 13, city, 6,000 square feet of retail, is that already constructed?
No.
Because there is some empty retail.
Well, Spring Peak across, so the, the Village Center was at that intersection of Talis Drive and Shy Bear Way. Spring Peak is just completing. There are, I think, one or two tenant improvements that are coming through right now for uses there. And then for parcel 13, they were required to build the non-residential component of that project about halfway through the construction of the residences. It was, I believe, during the recession, and they weren't able to do that. They wanted to be able to proceed with the residences. So they negotiated giving the property and the 6,000 square feet of required entitlement to the city so that they could proceed to see if we, with essentially free land, could make that happen. Right now, it is just grass.
And in these decisions that we'll be making in terms of what the new zoning looks like, how does that fit in the context of the growth targets that we have in terms of, from GMA, in terms of residential units versus jobs? It seems like most of the conversions are to eliminate jobs and add housing. So how does that conversation get framed at Land and Shore and Council?
That'd be great. Thank you for the heads up. Any other questions on the unbuilt properties?
Just quick, when you say city, that's, that's, we own that?
Yes. Anything else?
Lucy, why is there no entitlement or anything shown on parcel nine? Or is there?
So parcel nine is being given the entitlement that they have right now, that they got through the preliminary plat, which is 90 residences. Yeah, I don't know why I didn't show that on there.
They need some pink dots.
No, that's, and then one thing, it wouldn't show up here, but because parcels seven and eight are in the Lupa appeal, what we're proposing to do is to show their plating provisionally on the land use plan so that if it survives the appeal, it's automatically adopted because that would go into effect and we wouldn't have to come back to you. But if it doesn't survive, then we would have to come with a map update. We're thinking that because in the urban villages, the plating requires council action, that a map update would be part of that plating action so that we could just have it all happen together and not do two separate actions to be more efficient. So a couple of points about things that are changing. We haven't necessarily heard about these things, but we like to point out things that may concern property owners. One is that the critical area regulations that were in place when the development agreement, agreements were adopted have changed. Best available science has changed. The buffers are larger than they were when the tracks were originally established. This will create non-conforming lots near the critical areas. That sounds scary. On the other hand, the entire city of Iskwa had no critical area regulations for a long time, and houses were built in. Staff has a lot of experience working with homeowners. It doesn't mean changes can't happen, but it does sometimes limit the changes that can happen. Some of the requested changes to the undeveloped properties, such as the Trimet and Shelter properties, are concerning to some community members, and we're certainly having conversations with the UVDC and PPC commissions about those and what to recommend moving forward, if anything. Some rules and processes are changing. We hope that this will actually make things easier for the community because there will be more common rules across the city. But anyone who's familiar with the rules in the urban villages, it'll be, some of them may be different. Tree protection will go into place. There, there are some, you know, for both of these communities, hundreds, if not thousands of acres, were set aside as untouched. And so within the areas that they were allowed to develop, they were allowed to clear 100%. However, once you reach the end of the build-out period, even the development agreements recognize that tree protection was required. And so both the Talis and Iskwa Highlands development agreements have some tree protections in place so that if you didn't end up terminating the development agreement but passed the build-out period, there would be tree protections in place. But the, you know, going to the city's tree protections are more detailed than the ones that are in the development agreements. Again, we have gotten no comments on that, but that will be a change. And then, of course, just general uncertainty. Next steps, we're having this work session tonight. On the 19th, we have our final meeting with the UVDC and PPC. End of the month is the public hearing. And then we're hoping to meet in October and November with the Council Land and Shore Committee, and then with a tentative adoption date in early December.
Well, since the community meeting that I attended, there's been a lot of work, a lot of work that's been going on. So very, very substantive information. Paul?
Thank you. I do have a concern about what we talked about a moment ago regarding the TDRs. You said that this would, in the urban villages, the, the use of TDRs within a receiving site would require council action. When I think about all the purposes of TDRs, of course, one of them is to try to preserve open space generally in the, and, and by, you know, by creating a market where the person who has open space with development rights can at least get some market type of compensation, and then those goes elsewhere. If, then if I was a, if I was on land and I was, you know, and I was in, I had a receiving site, the idea that, boy, I want to acquire some, which would help preserve some open space, then I need approval of the council to actually apply them, who would ever do that? Who would ever buy TDRs knowing that they need approval then to actually have them applied? So I, I'm not looking for an answer right now, but it seemed to me that that would chill that market and that the chance of preserving that, any of that open space, that, that part of the formula goes away. So I think this requires more conversation. It's either, either we should have, this have, and you mentioned it already, having this policy conversation, well, then just, just remove them as receiving sites. So, I mean, just, because that's probably what would happen anyway. But I think as a community and a council, we should still have the conversation about, yeah, but what about the benefit of preserving open space? So I don't think that, I think that, that still has to be discussed further.
Right, and I think, I think what staff attempts to do is have a feedback loop from things that have happened and based on the conversation that occurred with the council in terms of the TDRs. Coming into West Ridge, it seemed like there was an interest in the council of having, being a part of that decision rather than it simply being a property owner decision. I don't disagree with the things that you're saying, so I think that's where the policy conversation is, you know, what, what are we trying to achieve and what's the best way to achieve it and, and do things that we think are right and important for the community.
Anything else for Lucy? No? So, do you have something, Keith? No?
No, I was going to close my head.
Like you're getting me to stand up. Do we have anybody from the public who would like to comment? As long as this is in the formation stage, might be good to get thoughts.
Miss, the first one is a question on the, the 10 built with 15 permitted. Has, are those, have those five already met their park obligations and their school obligations and transportation obligations and all of that? Is that already in the, in the, already taken care of? I assume it has, if it's the part of the whole total of so many thousand units up there that were bought the school and, or bought the land for the school, that kind of thing, so. Public process on trails is real important because sometimes maybe people don't want those trails, but those trails in a certain neighborhood could be critical to make the whole circulation system for the trails working. So, you know, some that are just kind of dead end in the whole little neighborhood is one thing, but those that are key to making the whole thing work are really important. For plazas, why don't we go 50 feet per thousand instead of 60 per 1,200? Just, you know, you know. And parcel, got the parcel nine thing clarified, the 90, I was wondering where those went. And, yeah, the TDR question is, you know, it's an interesting one, I think, needs a little more, a little clearer how that could work because they're certainly important. And almost every TDR we've ever done has been huge and big and very involved with the council. But if they can start doing two or three, it could change dramatically a certain building or something in the, in the community in the neighborhood or something. So you got to understand it as well. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Anyone else?
So I'm going to start with the small and go up. Just because in the past, we did 250 for Iskwa Highlands and 150 for Talis for parks, it doesn't doesn't seem correct that you should say, wow, the Highlands people, they need more parks than the Talis people. So it seems like it should be equitable. Wherever you go, they should be getting the same benefits. Because we all know Talis sort of got short on parks. The plazas, especially as they panned out in the Isqwa Highlands, are too small for major gathering places, so I don't think that the standards were enough. This sort of gets to the, what worked and what didn't conversation that I think needs to be discussed. Now, my, my big thing is I spent a lot of my day reading the EIS and the Planned Action Ordinance for the Central Isqwa Plan again, because it's just fun as all get out, right? But what I wanted to do is I wanted to understand, if we start moving the CIDS standards all over town, how did we get to do those standards, which are high and impervious surface, more zero lot line, they're supposed to be more urban? But what we did is we required the green necklace, we required extended landscaping standards for the streetscapes, et cetera. And while the Isqwa Highlands and Talis both bought land or preserved land in order to get their density, they, they, if you apply the CIDS in some of these situations, they are not also bringing along the requirements of CIDS to offset those rules, right? So they, not all of them, but there are some, that you can't just transfer over without reducing the qualities within the environment that were required within the Central Isqwa Plan. So that sort of brought me to a whole different level with our sort of current trend to use the CIDS like, like they're just sort of equal to the, to the regular code. They aren't. They are a more urban standard that we have very specific requirements to fulfill in order to meet our environmental impact statement to show that we are sort of not raping and pillaging our environment, right? So I can't go with that table. I would stop it. I can't go with that table. And if it were me, I would stop that right now before they continued more work in that direction and, and say, wow, this needs to be considered more completely.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any comments from the council? That all you have for us? Okay? Do we have anything else we need to bring up? All right, we're...
It's not even nine o'clock.
Oh, wait, it's too early.
We've got hours left.
All right, we're adjourned.